Counsel, I have a couple items on here that I'm going to kind of refer to as maybe updating the city a little bit in terms of the way we do business. And I've asked Carrie to come and present on what's called Civics Plus is the company that hosts our website. As you know, we're going to be updating the website. We get a free upgrade. And with that comes options, not free options, but options nonetheless, that can help us kind of, the way we do business, deliver it better for the residents. And I've asked Carrie to come and she's kind of been the point person on certainly the website and then working with Civic Plus to talk through some of the modules that they offer, some of the new technologies. And I've asked her to kind of give us an update on that.
So, yeah, Civic Plus is the company that we contract with, who hosts our website. And per our contract, every three years, we get a free redesign. We are eligible for our next redesign as of last year, but since we were in the middle of elections, I wasn't going to touch that both at the same time. Now that it's not an election year, we're trying to get that rolling. Another part of this project that I'm kind of trying to wrap in is all municipal governments are required to switch over to a .gov address or web domain. So we won't have the CI dot east dash Bethel dot MN dot U, all that. We will have to pick an address and switch over to a .gov. I'm trying to wrap that into the same thing at the same time, which means eventually all of our email addresses will also change to whatever that .gov domain is that we wind up choosing. Ideally, I'm trying to get that timed out so that comes into effect January first of 2026. So we just have a nice turnover date for that. But in addition to all that, we do have Civic Plus does offer what they call modules, which are kind of add-on programs that we can use on the back end of our website. That works for, some of them are just for staff side. Some of them will affect how the public can use our website as well. There are eight main modules that we have as staff that we have looked at. I set up a couple of meetings with Civic Plus and got a bunch of staff together and we sat in here and we went over some, we reviewed how the modules function, what they look like on the public side, what they look like on the backside, that sort of thing. Do you have access to the shared drive where you're at right now?
I do.
Because I think I have the module information in the work meeting folder.
In the work meeting, okay.
Yeah. Otherwise, I can hook up my laptop too. But yeah, like I said, there's eight main modules that, let's see here, module info. Okay, that's agenda and meeting management. I think there's another one.
There's archive, social, next request.
That one, that's the one. Okay. So this is kind of the list of the different modules that we've been looking at. There's a community development module, which actually breaks down into smaller pieces. It's very, very similar to what our staff is currently using to issue building permits. The software that we use right now is called PermitWorks. We haven't exactly had the best luck with getting support on the back end when we have issues with it. PermitWorks is a very small company and like I said, we haven't, haven't had the best of luck with getting in contact with any staff on their end when we have issues. Part of Civic Plus's community development module offers permitting software. One of the additional benefits to their permitting software is granted, we have to get everything scanned in so that we have everything electronically rather than in our paper community property files. But then if somebody, a resident, wanted to go in and pull up their own property file, they could do that from our website rather than having staff pull it up. They can look and see what current building permits a property has active. So when we get data requests from somebody, does my neighbor have a permit pulled for their roof? They're working on it right now. They'd be able to go into the website, punch in their neighbor's address, and they'd be able to find it out themselves. So it does add a use as far as public transparency, at least for the permitting part. It does also, under the community development module, they do also have a licensing portion so that we could issue, I could issue the tobacco licenses and the liquor licenses and that sort of stuff. There are several different uses under the community development module. The second module, the social media archiving module. As, because we have social media accounts as a municipality, we are required to keep the records of anything that we post or any sort of exchange that happens on our account. We are responsible for retaining those records. And they have to be kept depending on the nature of the message. We have to keep them for so many years. Social media, their social media archiving module connects with our social media accounts and it start, it tracks that for us. Right now, we're doing it kind of very, very low-tech way. We're doing it via screenshot. Myself and one other staff member are trying to capture every message, every response that we get from every resident. We have to try and capture that and we're having to do it by hand via screenshot. This will track it for us as it's posted. So there is, there's, that kind of satisfies the legal requirement that we have and it's a time saver that way. Process automation and digital services. The best way to describe that is any forms that we have online, it would automate those so that if something, you know, if a request comes in for a zoning land use request, it would automatically, it would forward that to Grace. It would, if we wanted it to CC Kendra or if we wanted it to CC Matt, it would do that. It automatic, it automates the process so that we don't, it kind of fills in the gaps so that if we were to have a staff changeover like we have recently, it closes that gap so that it gets the mess, the information and it creates a checklist. Has this person seen it? Has this person seen it? Has this person seen it? And it cannot be approved until all of those have been checked off. It, we, it can create that automation for any form that we attach to that module. The fourth module is mass notification. Most cities use that and they use it at the bare minimum level where if we have an emergency notification that has to go out, we can use the mass notification module and it will, you can either send it out to anyone that has signed up for it or you can have it so that it pings any cellphone number within our towers range, within our designated municipal borders. You can use that for emergencies or you can use it on day-to-day notifications like, okay, for the Whispering Aspen neighborhood, we're going to be flushing hydrants. We're letting all of them know this morning that that's what's going on this week. And so you can do it with day-to-day things or you can do it, you know, at a less frequent level for just emergencies and stuff. See Click Fix is very, very common or very, very similar to what we have currently with our complaint reporting. If somebody had, if a plow hits a mailbox, they could use See Click Fix. And not only could they, you know, put in their address, but it would show a map. They could attach photos and you could, we could use, staff could use See Click Fix to send it out to specific staff members like, oh, this public works guy is in this area right now. We're going to send it to him so he can check it out and, you know, sort of thing. And the person that submitted that request can see the responses in real time as to who it gets assigned to, when it's been looked at, that sort of thing. The next one, Audio I for municipal websites. This one again is kind of a legal requirement. So it's kind of, we've kind of nudged that one up there a little bit as far as, you know, our wish list. Since this one satisfies a legal requirement, it's a little bit high up there. This one helps us check everything that's posted on our website to make sure that it's ADA compliant. So if anyone has any visual disabilities, if they have any reading disabilities or if they have any physical disabilities so that they have to use alternative equipment to actually be able to read the website, this double checks our content to make sure that we fall within those guidelines. That's another federal requirement that is coming down that we have to comply with. I believe it's June 25th of 2026 that we have to fall in compliance with a very basic level of how we post things and the content that we post. And it goes, it runs the full gamut from, do we have subtitles on all of our photos? To is the color of our text too close to the color of the background screen? And is it, is it easy enough for people to read? It, so it does all of those sort of checks as far as website compliance. The second to last one, agenda and meeting management. That one's my favorite, but this one helps us bill as far as on the staff side. This one helps us build our council packets and our meeting packets. We would start, you know, staff would start putting in the agenda items and we, as we add content or the information that you guys view, it would automatically sort that underneath which agenda item it is attached to. So usually the way we do it now, when I'm putting together a council packet, we'll pull together, you know, agenda items. And as we have the write-up or any attachments or exhibits that go along with that, I have to pull all that together by hand on the day that I send it out to you guys. If I'm out that day, we find somebody to back it up. With this software, any one of our staff can do it with the click of a button. And it had, an additional option is, for example, if one of the items on the agenda, if we're making an ordinance change, it will automatically number that ordinance. And since we get municode, which is a subdivision of Civic Plus, it can automatically send that to Civic Plus for codification. It's not something that I have to do quarterly. It will automatically do that with the touch of a button. So if I get hit by a bus, somebody else, you know, has the ability to do it quite easily. We do have the ability through that as well. It's a kind of sub-add-on underneath that that we would, we could try to do minutes in-house with that. That would require staff time. Right now, we contract out with time savers for that. But for smaller meetings, like when we have town hall meetings or if we have a shorter work meeting or the HRA meetings, a lot of times I wind up doing those minutes in-house. That was something that we could also use to put together those minutes packets. And it'll do that for us and it, it'll, it'll automatically number resolutions and it will cross-tag between, so if we have a discussion on an item during a council meeting, later on down the road when those minutes are approved, those minutes, if somebody clicks on those minutes and they have an item in that minutes, it'll bring them back to the packet where that was discussed so you can bring up the information that was in the packet pertinent to that part of the meeting or that part of the minutes. Also, it cross-links to if there was a change in the ordinance, it'll automatically take you to municode and show you where it was changed. Or if you're looking at municode and want to say, hey, when was this change made? I want to see the minutes for that. In municode, you can click on that and it'll take you back to the minutes from the meeting where that change was, was approved.
Carrie, will that do verbatim minutes if we need them?
If we were to use that to do our own minutes, it would be, it's a little more heavy on the staff side for that. So it would be however we put it in, however we enter it, so. And then the last item called next request specifically pertains to data requests. And it is a tracking system for data requests. We can publish, granted, not all data requests are going to have public data attached to them. Some of it's going to be private data. But you would, the, each request would get entered into a list that would appear online. And if it's public information, other people can see, oh, this was already requested. I can see the results of that. I don't have to submit another request. The thing that I think is really awesome is it can do redacting for us. That is the huge, huge time consumption element when we have any sort of data request. We can't charge for my time to redact it. We, you know, we can charge for copies, we can charge for the time that it takes to pull it and compile it. We cannot charge for time redacting. And that is the lion's share of time that is consumed with any data request. But when that can help us, it'll automatically redact phone numbers, email addresses, social security numbers. And it has that as automatic settings within that software. And it does it multiple files at a time, not just one page at a time. And like I said, we can choose that if we fill a data request through this, you can make it public. So if somebody else wants the same information, they do not have to submit an identical request and we send the same thing out to somebody else. They could look on and say, oh, hey, somebody else already asked for this. I can click on that and it'll pop it up. So, yeah, that, those are the modules that we have looked at as staff. Obviously, you know, it's kind of a Christmas wish list sort of thing, but they all come with a price tag. And, you know, none of them are ever cheap. But some of them that we have looked at are, like I said, we, we've looked at all of them amongst staff. But I kind of had staff go through and rank what they think would be the most useful as far as our current staffing level, what kind of workload we have and, you know, what our current procedures are and whatnot. From a staff standpoint, the number one wish is the community development module. There you go, you got that. The community development module, specifically the permitting software. The licensing, like I said, is an addition underneath that community development module. But specifically the permitting software. And because that could be a replacement for Permit Works that we have right now. And I know the second item that you guys have on your agenda tonight is to talk about the backlog we have of imaging our property files in the community development department. Once we have those files imaged, that would work, that would dovetail right into the permitting software with Civic Plus. So that, for example, Suzanne, if you wanted to pull up your property record and we had everything imaged, it would backtrack every permit that we have on file and you could go back and look, okay, so this is the inspection report from the roof that was done in 2007. Or, you know, something like that. And you can backtrack and you'd be able to backtrack and see every piece of paper that we have in your property file that is public information. The second one that we were looking at that staff kind of rated overall as our second one on the wish list is the process automation and the digital services. Like I said, that is the module that lets us tie any sort of application form or any form that we put on the website. That gives us that automated work list and checklist to make sure that, like I said, in the example of a land use request, it goes to Grace first, Kendra signs off on it. If it's something weird that we have to check with Nate, they can make sure that Nate signs off on it before it actually comes, before you guys to get approved. So it goes down the, you know, the chain of checklist that it has to go through. And we don't have anything falling between the cracks as far as, well, this person looked at it and this person looked at it, but we skipped so-and-so because they were out on vacation or some, you know, something like that. And the third one was the agenda meeting and management, which, like I said, that's specifically for creating the packets for our meetings. Something that I didn't, I forgot to tell you guys about that. On the staff side, for assembling the packets, that was, that was our biggie. On your guys' side of viewing the packets, so anyone that uses our website can create a login if they want to submit a request or anything else. For those commission members and council members that create a login for the website, you guys would get permissions to view the packet. And each one of you, since you have your own individual account, you could make notes on it online and it will save your notes on the packet specifically to you. And then even if you leave office, it will keep your notes, whoops, sorry. It will keep your notes with those packets for as long as you have your account active, whether or not you are on council.
But nobody else can see our notes.
Nope, they are private to you unless you share them with someone else. Yep. So you guys would also be able to see the packet as we're putting, as we're adding information, as we're putting it together.
That would be really nice because this Friday afternoon stuff, if I'm going out of town, is a little rough.
Well, and yeah, like, like I said, if, if there's stuff that gets added, you know, on a Friday afternoon, that would pop in. But if there's something that goes in there two weeks prior, you'd be able to see it.
Well, exactly. I mean, one or two things on a Friday afternoon is fine, but, you know, hundreds of pages on a Friday afternoon and you're.
Hundred and sixty-three of this last one, yep. But yeah, that, so that was most of staff, I won't say all of staff, but that was most of staff. After we, we kind of reviewed how the modules work, we had a presentation from the Civic Plus staff. And we all kind of sat together and discussed, you know, where it could be used, what it, you know, what our current needs are and whatnot. And that was how staff ranked these with, you know, what, like I said, what we had viewed and, you know, if we were, had our druthers.
So what is the cost of these three?
So from a cost standpoint, they're very.
What we're paying now and.
They're very smart, right? They know the top three that everyone wants. So you might see a Click, See Click Fix, and I'm just pulling numbers up, but that might be $500. Your community development director or your community, community development program might be $10,000, you know. So they understand what the top issues are that people are going to be looking for. And the rest are nice to have, but aren't as commonly purchased, you might say.
I mean, for something like this, I mean, you guys must know how much time that you're putting in doing everything.
Right.
And I mean, figuring out your time versus what the program costs.
Right. So when staff kind of got together and were kind of looking at some of these options, I think the benefit of the staff is we're a small team and time is our commodity, right? And you could get 10 data requests and that's your week, you know, trying to fill these things. But the rest of your work doesn't disappear. That, you know, it still needs to be done at some point too. So you start to get frustrated with the fact that you're getting behind. Same way with, you know, PermitWorks right now is difficult to use, that it's not being supported. So at some point, we have to move out of that into something new. The benefit of using Civic Plus is, first of all, we're not the first one out of the gate and other communities are using this. Kind of the bugs are worked out of the system. But because you have the website, because they have municode, because, you know, they, they've been smart enough to integrate everything. So it works seamlessly together and, but everything comes with a cost, so.
Have you talked with other cities to see how they're using these programs and how beneficial they are to them?
Um, I believe it's the city of Blaine uses the permitting software online, similar to what, how we would use it in, in respect to residents can go in, if they, you know, if they have an account created, they can go in and punch in an address and pull up and see, okay, well, these are the current permits that are open. These are the ones that, you know, have been pulled in the past. And I believe Lionel Lakes has something similar as far as local cities. I do have a list of other cities that aren't necessarily in Minnesota as far as samples, if you would want, if you'd want to see that. But I believe it's Blaine that also uses Civic Plus, this exact same module. As far as time savings, we haven't really checked into what time savings would be for other staff. I have for myself, for the agenda management module, with the amount of time that I spend on putting together packets and, like I said, getting the attachments in the right, you know, getting everything in the right order, getting all the attachments on there, getting them labeled, getting the pages numbered and all that kind of stuff. I figured out that in the course of a year, the agenda management module would save just me 105 hours in staff time. Just for council packets. That doesn't count our EDA packets, our work meeting packets, you know, if we were to do a work meeting packet, planning commission packets.
That's what I mean. That's, I mean, it's good because I want you to figure it out that way because then we can look at it and say, definitely this is a plus and helps you guys so you can do your job more efficiently.
And like I said, it also kind of, at least, at least with that particular module, it eliminates me being a single point of failure when it comes to assembling things and pulling things together. You know, we have Fay as my backup, but she does a great job. But when she only has to do it once every three months, it's easy to fall out of practice too.
I agree. Thank you. Is this going to be a service that we have to pay for every year, the same amount? Like, is the initial investment higher or is it going to stay the same?
The initial investment would be higher for most of these. But I think quite a few of them also have a subscrib, excuse me, subscription fee as well.
Have you looked, are there any other companies out there that you can compare prices with? Or is this the only one that offers these services?
There are other website companies that will offer similar packages, not all of them. And the benefit that we have is that we're currently going through the redesign with Civic Plus. And like I said before, Civic Plus owns municode who hosts our city code. So that ties in together as well. We could, you know, if we wanted to go with another company for our website, yeah, we could certainly do that. But then I would probably want to put the brakes on our redesign project right now. And, you know, that we could tie municode in with another company or whatever else and see, you know, see what kind of modules they offer. I don't know that they have quite the variety in their module library.
So is the current permit process cost going to be pretty much identical to the new?
No. No. I'm not sure what our current costs are as far as PermitWorks. But like I said, PermitWorks. But, like I said, uh, PermitWorks, we're having an issue getting support when we need it. And, um, it is a access database, the based program. And I'm not sure how much longer that's, uh, access is going to be supported either as far as, um, IT-wise.
No, I, I like all of these and I am all for saving you guys time because I do know how busy you are and how overwhelming it can be, especially as our city grows. I, I'm a little concerned about a couple of things. The privacy, the privacy on this permit thing, um, can, where the, I can go and look at somebody else's property records. Do they redact stuff automatically, uh, on, on that particular aspect of it or?
Only the files that are deemed as public would be accessible by the public.
So they would just be able to see, they do have a permit, not all the-
Correct.
Any bitty details of it?
Because like, for example, commercial blueprints are not public information. So we wouldn't want, you know, somebody to know where all the ins and outs are of a commercial building. That's, you know, that's a security risk. That would not be accessible.
Right. And people's names and phone numbers because a lot of people don't want their name out there, you know?
Name, names and addresses are public information, but email addresses, cell phone numbers, those, that would be redacted information.
All right. And then you, you were talking about ADA compliance and stuff like that. I actually have a question, not exactly related to that. But when pe- people are watching us, if they are hearing impaired or is it closed captioning on the website and stuff like that, on YouTube and stuff?
Not on the website, but that was part of why we created the YouTube channel is because the YouTube, YouTube has, it, not only is it a free channel, but it does have a, uh, closed caption tool that somebody can activate. Doesn't necessarily guarantee the accuracy all the time, which is why I'm always being a nag about speaking into the microphones. But, um, but it is a free tool for, for anyone to access via YouTube.
I, I was just concerned because I was reading somewhere that some cities are being sued because they don't have a interpreter or something-
Right.
Present, so I wanted, when you mentioned ADA, that popped in my head.
ADA compliance, uh, lawsuits are becoming quite common.
Yeah, and I really do like the idea of getting packets. Every little bit of information helps getting it sooner, especially when you have a rocking schedule like I do.
So going forward here.
So Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, we can, uh, get some pricing put together, kind of, um, bring that back to another work session. We can talk through some of those issues. Try and assess some of the time savings that, that would happen. Kind of get what PermitWorks costs. We don't have that information right off the top. But we can get all that and come back and, and present it and, um, see where you guys want to go with it, so. Okay, Mr. Mayor, um, coming in here to East Bethel, one of the challenges that I've, uh, kind of seen staff struggling with is, um, this backlog of paper files that we have. And, um, we have files dating back to the beginning of time. And, uh, and there's been efforts to undertake digitizing or, or essentially, um, getting them onto a computer so that they can be filed under a property address. And kind of it, you know, with, with this whole discussion of the website and the possibility of bringing in, um, a module that can allow people, for example, a realtor wants to know, they're gonna sell a property, when were, when was the, well worked on on it, when was the roughed on, you know, permits, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, and so today, what they're doing is they're calling in. Misty is going, trying to find a paper file. Maybe it's not there, maybe it is there, maybe somebody else has it, you know? Trying to, trying to chase this file down. Versus being able to either have that realtor go online and pull down that information that they're looking for and not even generate a telephone call. Or, um, if they need to call in, we're able to access it quickly and, and give them that information. So, um, one of the issues that we're challenged with here is, what is the cost to image these files, to di- digitize them? And, um, and who would do that? Okay? So there are services out there that will, will bulk scan everything you have. But we have different sizes, large format, small format. We've got, uh, if we've had to serve, uh, uh, you know, a property with certified mail, we've got the little green cards that are stapled that you have to pull off and you want to include that. So it becomes complicated. And so we're trying to, uh, assess, first of all, um, what if we have a service do it? Versus what if we try and set up the side room here and, uh, and perhaps bring in some, um, high school students for the summer? And train them how to do this and scan this and, and get us through this, this time. Or perhaps, uh, we get, uh, residents of the community that maybe are recently retired, want to give back to their community, uh, and, uh, and have the capacity to run through these files and get them into a format that we can, going forward, essentially have everything we need. Now, one of the concerns that, um, I've had, I, and maybe it was brought on with the whole discussion of the fire chief, is what happens if we have a fire? All these files we have, it's just tinder waiting to go up. And if that ever, ever were to happen, uh, this city would be in, in peril from the standpoint of a historical standpoint. So, um, I think it's absolutely critical that we get this, um, image, that we get it, in a safe format, have all the history there, we can, we can, um, get them into property files, so everything is categorized and neat and accessible. And that'll not only serve, um, our staff, but long after we're gone, it'll serve everyone else that's trying to research a lot of this information, so. But then also it kind of dovetails with this website discussion. So, um, if it is, uh, something that the council would be supportive, we want to kind of determine, get some estimates on what the cost would be to have this done by a service, if that was the best route to go. Or if we can somehow put together a community campaign. I, I envision somewhat like, um, uh, your, uh, election judges, thank you, that come in and, and are very sharp people, know what their job is, can stay from beginning to finish, uh, goal oriented and succeed in, in finishing a project like this. I think it's, it's critical. And, um, and if, if we get your blessing, we'll certainly, um, uh, head down this road to try and secure what we have in the back. We have not only the property files, but we also have all the documents in the vault that are historical documents, that are, that are necessary for preservation. A vault might last a little longer in a fire, but, um, but probably won't last forever. So again, those, those I think are at risk as well until we can get them into a, into a digital format, so.
Okay, refresh my memory. Didn't we pack four or five years ago that big body scanners just for?
Right, that's what I was gonna ask.
Um, we, we did get, I believe, li- uh, two licenses for Laserfish. Since then, Laserfish is kind of a, a top end tool. Right now, where we're working at is we have tools that we don't even have the ability to use right now. What we're, what we're considering, looking at is possibly the, the addition of a secondary shared drive to scan the property files onto so more than two people can access those property files at a time. Right now, if somebody were to call in and would like to have, uh, has a data request, they want to look at the septic information for a property that's up for sale, Misty and Grace have access to that. None of the rest of us have access to that because we only have the two licenses. So if they're gone, you know, if community development is in a, a department meeting, myself or any other staff, we couldn't even help out if we wanted to because we don't have access to those files.
They're costly licenses. Laserfish is somewhat, PDF is somewhat replacing Laserfish now. I'm sure they don't care for that, but, uh, at any rate, I think our transition over to that would be, makes sense as well. Save money, uh, doing that. And I think ultimately have a more usable platform than we currently have.
Yeah, and I just want to make a suggestion. If you're going to go in the community, um, election judge module of doing this, maybe you can rent a couple of really quick, fast scanners.
We're talking about that.
And I'm thinking it could be way cheaper than hiring out a, another company to do it.
We're, we're planning to look into that option as well.
We, but yeah, we, we do have to balance those costs, you know, because community will want to do it, but they're gonna want something for it too. I mean, I'll be, like, I'll do it, but my time isn't free either.
You know, I, I use the example, and, and the county, the county was transitioning over to a, um, kind of a new, uh, system that received books in that was automated, but they all had to have a, a tag put on them. And so they reached out to people in the community and say, hey, would you be willing to come in and dedicate X number of hours to put in tags on millions and millions of articles and books and whatever the case is? And the community responded. They came in, they tagged everything and they helped the, um, helped save the county tremendous amount of money and got through that painful process. And, uh, and so I, I think that people will step up if asked, uh, to do that. And so that's a little more work maybe to try and get folks to, you know, ask them and beg them and plead with them to help. But, uh, but it might work. And, and also we may be able to find some, uh, uh, high school students that are sharp and, you know, want to participate, uh, making a few extra dollars and we can train them to, this is your task.
And I am seeing a lot of posts of parents looking for their fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old something to do this summer, so I-
They're, they're usually pretty techy and it's air conditioned. I mean, what, there's really no downside, so. Anyways. So, Mr. Mayor, if that's something you would like us to continue pushing forward on, we will. I wanted to-
Yeah, bring, bring it back to us?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Item three.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, facility studies. So we've, um, we've, uh, I think in the past, there's been some facility studies that have been done specific to a department. But not citywide in terms of what is the age of your facilities, what are your needs of population growth comms? And, uh, and I think there's some talk about, uh, Fire Station Two is kind of being outgrown. You know, what, you know, if the community were to build another fire station, number one, what size would be needed, where should it be located, you know, those type of questions. Doesn't commit to doing it, but at least it arms you with information to, uh, prepare for the future or for future councils to prepare for, um, you know, decisions that they may have to make. A, a study like this is not inexpensive as well. There's services out there that do this, but they take into account all the variables. There are growth in population numbers, traffic, et cetera. And, um, and it's, uh, uh, something that, uh, that we can certainly research, get some pricing on, um, and, and see if that's something you want to pursue, if, if you guys want us to go down that road too.
Yeah, I know back in nineteen ninety, we did one for the fire service. Bob Aldrich did it, and it was twenty-five hundred bucks back then. And his recommendation come back as a sticker shock to the city. You have the six patients you wanted here at that time. But it's a good thing to have, just to see where you're at. Where to start going.
I, I, I think we know we're faulting on that issue, but I think, um, it's something that might need to wait till the next budget because from what I'm seeing, we got a lot of spending, planning, going on and planning to spend going on, and I think we're gonna have to, we've got to put some things on the back burner. We just have to. We, we cannot commit to all this spending right now. That's my-
Would it cost anything just to check up on pricing?
No, no, we can get a, uh, we can get an estimate on what that would cost. It'll be more next year, but-
They think we could at least do that?
Yeah, yeah. I think we can put an RFP out there and see what people, what sort, what agencies might respond to that and, um, at least get a better understanding where, what the cost might be if you guys were to decide to pull the trigger on that, so.
So I'll judge everybody?
Okay.
Item four.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, I've got the fire chief with me here, um, this evening. And, uh, wanted him to kind of address the council a little bit on, um, the flooring situation and the different fire stations that we have. And, uh, I know he's gone out, he's gotten some quotes, or a quote at least at this point. And, um, and if, uh, if you'd like, we'd, we can discuss a little bit about some of the needs we have in the fire station buildings, so. Chief?
Yeah.
Yep. I think you gave me an email on those two.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, in just my short time here going through the stations and such, some of our floors are in, in some need of repair. We have some significant, uh, chipping in that at, uh, Station One. Station Two, um, looks like it was painted, um, for lack of better words, with a roller, um, you know, it, it wasn't necessarily a, a, a commercial coating that was put on. That's peeling up. So in, in tying back to, um, the facility study question, it's probably a little while before we're looking at potentially building a station or renovating a station or anything of that nature. So how do we make these stations last longer and survive what we put them through? We're putting fifty thousand pound apparatus on them and that kind of stuff. So how do we, how do we do that? And one of the ways is these floor coverings, um, Volt is who was up here today. They gave us a quote on Station Two. They're working on a quote for Station One. Um, and I will be getting them the information for Station Three. We're just looking at what is it gonna take to preserve these stations and make them last for as long as we need them to. You can see up there, the grand total for Station Two was eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and some change, which comes out to be approximately seven dollars and twenty cents a square foot. That is to get the old coating up, prep the surface, fix any of the concrete and then put the new, uh, commercial coating down.
Is this a, like, the epoxy coating stuff you're putting down or is it something different?
So it is an epoxy coating. However, they're not using that term anymore, so I'm gonna use that lightly. Just with not, with that not being my expertise, I can't tell you exactly what they're terming it now. Uh, but the new stuff, um, doesn't yellow like epoxy. It doesn't harden quite as hard as the epoxy does. It remains flexible, so it shifts with the concrete versus, um, breaking when, when the concrete moves. Volt, um, is just one company of many. We have other, um, quotes also. Some of them are older, twenty-two, twenty-three. I think there's one in twenty-four. We would have to get those redone. We all know that prices have gone up over the years, um, in, in recent times. Volt offers a twenty-five year warranty on their floor covering system. Which, it's a decent time. We, we talked about doing Station Two in phases so that the apparatus could still stay in the station or at least the main apparatus could stay in the station. So they do half of it one day, wait for it to dry, move the truck over and then they come move it, uh, and come do the other half. There's cost savings if we just pull all the apparatus out and utilize other facilities to house the apparatus, let them do it all at once. Uh, that price actually comes out to be about six sixty a square foot. If we're using those numbers, and I can't say that it's gonna be perfect for Station One, I did quick calculations, it comes out approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars to do the sta- the Station One apparatus bay, uh, at seven dollars and twenty cents. They're also quoting out the hallways and the radio room. Again, it's to put the maintenance back into the building so that they survive that much longer and are useful for our crews. Again, Station Three, I need to get the information for them. We started to go out there and that- We started to go out there and that road's closed right now and we didn't wanna take the detour. Station Three is fairly easy to measure and he had confidence I could handle that, so. That one's painted on, too?
Yeah.
Okay. So again, we have the one quote. The other quotes we do have are similar in, in price that we've obtained. If you would like me to, I can continue going down that route and get multiple quotes and we can look at what that ultimate cost is.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, I think once a floor starts chipping up, your options are try and save it or you're gonna, you're gonna concrete saw, cut it up and repour it, and that's gonna be extremely expensive. So this is gonna be your more reasonable option to try and save the flooring. But once it, once it starts, if you don't catch it, it's, it's not gonna wait for you. It's only gonna get worse, so. And I, and I also wanna say, in the budget, every year, we allocate fifty thousand dollars for facilities. And we have an account right now with about a half a million dollars in it. There was never anything spent in the past, the reasons why it's accrued to that amount. But, but essentially, things like this carpeting or the paint for the walls or whatever the case is, that's kind of what those dollars were intended for. We just put an HVAC system on this roof, replace that, again, what these dollars are for. So we have the money in, you know, already taxed from the people, shall we say, in an account, ready and, and to be used. And, and preserving our facilities, of course, is going to save the life of it. The ultimate cost is replacement, which is tremendous, so.
Station One's gonna be different animal because that floor was replaced three times in the first year we had the station. Three times.
That's why I'm not saying that my estimation is what it's going to cost. That is a different coating than, than Station Two and Three, so I don't know what the prep cost.
Station Two and Three are just a project thing.
Okay.
Has, grinding everything, so it's, it's like a terrazza wall.
Okay.
But it was, concrete wasn't properly etched at the time when they did it. So you park the truck on there to heat for the tire repair.
I'd definitely say go for it, get the quotes and bring them back. I, I was kind of astonished at, when I was an election judge, at some of the maintenance issues I've seen in the fire departments and stuff, so I, it was kinda shocking. I'm like, why aren't they doing anything with this? So I've seen it, I know it needs to be done. Bathrooms need to be fixed, they're awful.
How many quotes would you like to see?
Three, I think three is a good one. Three is usually what's required.
Okay, we'll do that, we'll get the quotes, we'll bring it back and you guys can decide the direction that you wanna go, so.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Chief.
This'll be more than five minutes, so we'll add it to the next work session.
Okay, at this time.
I don't think we need one.
This time to close the council work meeting.